All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Placerville City Council meeting Tuesday, June 11, 2024. Will you please all rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Here.
Mayor No.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Okay, we will move to ceremonial matters. 3.1, introduction of new police officer, Michael Abanov.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Rain, your Chief of Police. It's my honor to introduce the newest member of the Placerville Police Department to you guys. Michael, come on up. If I have to stand up here, you've got to stand up here with me. You know, I was thinking about this on the way over here, how fortunate I've been during my tenure as chief to stand in front of you and introduce remarkable men and women to join the Placerville Police Department. And Michael is no exception. He came to us in January as a reserve officer, wanted a full-time job, but at that time we were full up and had no openings. So we knew there was a potential for an opening with the leaving of Officer Singh. So we hired Michael and we said, man, when that opening occurs, you're going to slide right in. Be beautiful. Well, Singh left, Michael broke his ankle, and we had to wait. That's what extended this moment today. We're glad to have him. He's a remarkable man. He has the ethics and morals of an exceptional police officer. And I'm going to have him introduce his family, and then we're going to do the ceremonial swearing-in. And at that time, I'm going to invite his family to stand up there with him, too. You won't have to say anything unless you want to, but stand up there. So come on up.
Hello, Council. It's an honor to be up here and to be a part of Placerville as a police officer. This is my family back here. I have my parents, Mom and Dad, Slavik and Natalia, all my siblings, and as well as my beautiful wife that I love and adore. And it's just an honor to be here. I am really excited to work for the city of Placerville. And I am thankful for the whole council and the chief and commanders for giving me the opportunity as well.
Kind of hoping he'd say he loves and adores me, too, but I can see why he would pick her over me. So we're going to do the ceremonial swearing-in. Any members of the family who would like to stand up with Michael? And the reason why we do that is because even though it's a commitment between he and I swearing this oath, you guys are a large part of this because you're giving him to us and entrusting his safety, training in us, and we don't take that lightly. We understand the importance of it, and we will do our best to provide him with the very best equipment, the very best training possible. And he's got wonderful partners, some of whom are in the back, that will always be there for him. So who wants to stand up here with him? All right. Everybody, Michael, stand right up over there. All right, Michael, raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Michael Abanov.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all endearths, foreign enemies, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation, or purpose of division, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of which I am charged with. Congratulations, Mayor. Oh, wait a second. This is not a symbol of authority. This is a symbol of public trust, and we appreciate the fact that the public in this sitting trusts us with staff to serve our community and give us here. And we practice that. All right. All right. Perfect. All right. Right on time. And wait. You're going to the back row with the council on the corner? Come on.
And thank you again, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to introduce Michael to you guys.
And big thank you from parents, and we're glad that you accept him. You've been looking quite a bit for jobs, so he'll lie here and there, and it's grateful so he can serve. It was his dream to serve at this small town in the California. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations and welcome, Michael. Okay, thank you. We're really excited to have you aboard.
Okay, we will move on. You can release them.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to sit with you. I barely want to sit with you.
Okay, we'll move on to 3.2. A proclamation of the City Council proclaiming June 13 to the 16th, 2024, is Eldorado County Fair Week. Whereas, the 2024 theme for the Eldorado County Fair is Barrows, Boots, and Bling. And whereas, the Eldorado County Fair is a vital part of our community since the first fair in 1859, offering an opportunity to showcase the myriad talents and industry of our citizens of all ages, particularly the youth involved in agriculture and livestock programs. And whereas, the Eldorado County Fair continues to encourage participation and recognition of the diverse accomplishments of the county's youth through an innovative partnership with the Eldorado County Office of Education, Future Farmers of America, Local Grange, University of California Cooperative Extension, and the Fair Association. And whereas, the Eldorado County Fair enriches the public's knowledge of the world around them through educational exhibits such as the Eldorado County Historical Museum, Eldorado County Master Food Preservers, Wool Spinning Demonstrations, the Junior Livestock Auction, and ag-related featured booths, and many demonstrations given by the master gardeners. And whereas, the Eldorado County Fair fosters increased cultural awareness and appreciation of the arts by providing a venue for the exhibition of dance, music, arts, and photography. And whereas, some of the highlights for this year's fair to be enjoyed by you and your families include wheelbarrow races, Rubicon Jeep Jamboree Challenges, Carnival Rides, Wild About Monkeys. Well, that's interesting. FMX Motocross, Truck and Tractor Pull, Father's Day Look-alike Contest, Pageants for Miss Eldorado and Eldorado Rose, Pee-wee Rodeo, Mutton Bustin', Circus Imagination, Game Shows, Junior Livestock Auction and Contests, Blacksmith Demos, and much, much more. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Placerville urges all citizens to participate in the many activities offered at this year's Barrows, Boots, and Bling at 100 Placerville Drive on June 13 through Father's Day, June 16, and extends its thanks to the many volunteers whose dedication is an essential part of the success of our annual county fair, and best wishes to the Board of Directors and staff for another successful Eldorado County Fair.
Yay!
Do we have Lori Warden or Kathy Dunick here? Okay, would you like to come up and? All right.
Hi, I'm Kathy Dunick, the CEO, and this is Lori Warden, our current board president. I've got to apologize for my casual attire. I've been running around the fairgrounds all day today. We just want to thank you guys for your proclamation and for encouraging the citizens of Placerville to enjoy our great fair.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take a picture.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are you guys going to the thing tomorrow?
Wednesday, the Wednesday beginning. I'm going Saturday.
Oh, okay. I am. They're going to feed us.
That's true. I didn't hear you.
All right, we're going to have a little cooldown for the fair, which will probably make that much more enjoyable. So yay for this weekend. All right, we will move to 3.2. A proclamation of the City Council proclaiming, oops, sorry, we did that one, 3.3. A proclamation in recognition of the law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics on June 21, 2024. I am going to read that proclamation at the bell tower on that day if you'd like to hear that. That will move us to 3.4. A proclamation recognizing the month of June 2024 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual Pride Month. Whereas, for more than two centuries, the founding principles and ideals of American life have included liberty, equality, freedom of expression, and the pursuit of happiness, which are intended to apply to everyone. And whereas, Marsha P. Johnson, a prominent leader of LGBTQIA+ pride, proclaimed, no pride for some of us without liberation for all of us, inspiring a commitment to inclusivity, compassion, and mutual aid in support of these ideals. And whereas, equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are fundamental to supporting joy, personal fulfillment, and economic success. And whereas, the city of Placerville celebrates the American values of liberty, equality, freedom of expression, and the pursuit of happiness, and recognizes the importance of its residents, visitors, and employees to safely express their multifaceted identities which enrich our communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Placerville does hereby recognize June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and honors all efforts that provide opportunities for a life free from discrimination and prejudice and in support of equality and the pursuit of happiness. And do we have Kristin Patterson here?
No.
Okay. Is there somebody here to receive the proclamation?
I had received an email this afternoon that they were not going to be able to make it, but I can make sure it gets to them.
Okay. We will pass that to you. All right. That brings us to number four, our closed session report. City Attorney Abrahimi.
Thank you. The council did meet in closed session. There was no public comment before meeting, and there is no reportable action on either item.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to number five, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously, and that will move us to six announcements and presentations to the public. Brief comments by the City Council. Councilmember Gottberg.
I attended the wagon train Golden History Days event. I think that's all I've got today.
Okay. Vice Mayor Clarici.
I attended the wagon train Golden History Days event, and it was splendid.
Thank you. Councilmember Yarborough?
I also attended the Golden History and Wagonways Train Event. It was very nice. I had a great time. In fact, my wife's 77- and 79-year-old aunt and uncle came from San Francisco to see it.
Nice.
So it was a really great experience.
Thank you. Councilmember Saragosa?
I was not able to attend this year's, the 75th anniversary. I know, I'm so bummed. I did, although the mayor did wave at me, I was watching it actually live on, unfortunately, I was out of town for business, but I watched it live, so she waved at me, so thank you for that, Mayor. But I just want to thank all the volunteers and staff and participants. It was a lot of work, I know, so I just want to thank everybody for that, for everything that they did that day. And then just a small thing that I saw in an email today. If you really love your 530 area code number, there's going to be a new phone number, a new overlay, 837, starting in January of 2025. So if you love, if you, for some reason don't want to, if you want to keep 530 numbers, if you need a new line, get it before then, because then it will change. New numbers will be 837 after that, so just a small tidbit of information.
Oh, thank you. That is a new, good tidbit. Good to know. Just like all of my fellow council members, on May 29, I went to the Second Budget Workshop, which we'll follow up later in this agenda, and I also attended the Golden History Days and Wagon trains, was a fabulous event, and not 103, I was so thankful for that. Yes, yes, weather was decent, lots of good stuff to see, and the wagon train coming through, and just all sorts of good stuff. All right. 6.2, Fire Safe Council update, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Acuna, who will give us an update on various things that they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, appreciate it. Good afternoon, council, mayor, and council members and distinguished department heads. My name is Mark Acuna, and I'm here this afternoon representing the Placerville Fire Safe Council, and I'm going to be presenting a brief overview of our 2024 Wildfire Safety Day event. With the continuing help of numerous organizations and CD sponsorship, the Placerville Fire Safe Council held its third annual Wildfire Safety Day, March 23. Attendance was up slightly this year to just over 400 residents. Last year, we had approximately 325. And the total costs associated with putting on the event this year were a little over $2,200. Some of that was generously donated from your general fund sources. Various presentations were well-received throughout the day, and we look forward to having the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, the State Insurance Commissioner's Office, and Neighborhood Radio Watchback next year, along with the always-popular Wildfire Simulation Table, returning in 2025. The event would not be possible without the, as I say, enthusiastic support of many agencies, and the Placerville Fire Safe Council would like to thank them for that continuing support. Allow me to list just a partial list. Those agencies include the Placerville Police Department, CAL FIRE, US Forest Service, Diamond Springs Fire, Tribal Fire, Eldorado County Animal Services, Eldorado Disposal, Eldorado County Water Agency, along with EID, Eldorado County Fire Safe Council itself, which is our mothership organization for all the fire safe councils, Mark Egbert, and also the FireWise organization, which is having a positive effect on various insurance costs. We are planning a few improvements for our 2025 event, and those will include moving the event with the hope to increasing attendance to April. There's some debate early April or late April. I'm leaning towards late April. We recognize that making a little adjustment to our starting time will put better use to all of those volunteer organization's time, so next year we'll start at 10 and end at 2. We were desperately seeking a separate room so that all of our presentations can go on undisturbed. You know, the acoustics at Midtown Mall are not the beautiful acoustics that you enjoy here. So we're working on improving that. That'll also allow us to move some more displays outside, so there's a little bit better interaction between the various agencies. I would be remiss if I didn't also thank all of the volunteers that have been a part of the Placerville Fire Safe Council for the last two or three years, and there are a few agencies that need special recognition because they were always there for us this year. Of course, Chief Cordero, who opened arms support of his entire department, any resource or piece of equipment that we requested, he graciously helped make that possible. Dave Warren from the city, he was our golden knight this year. Anything that we needed printed, whether it be a 36-by-whatever map or just a small document, he was the yes-man. Saturdays, Sundays, Dave was an awesome partner this year. We greatly appreciate his help. Also, Placerville Rotary, they continue for the third year to step up and offer their food truck services free of charge. They say their hot dog sales were down a little bit. That might be because the weather was not exactly great, but we are working on that. So special thanks to Placerville Rotary for their open support. Also, would like to thank Chief Johnson from the Eldorado Hills Fire Department. In his gracious use of his department's equipment and staff, they had a part of Placerville burning down the entire day on their fire simulation table, and they really put a lot of effort in that. And when they weren't burning Placerville down, they were replaying the actual tapes of the Kaldor fire. So that's impressive, and we look forward to having them back next year. So with that, I, lastly, 681 Main Street, the current owner and the current manager, Nancy Boyett, they very generously donated a great deal of extra space and free use of their parking facilities, which is one of the reasons it makes that work. So we hope to be there again next year. So with that, again, I would like to thank all of our volunteers, and I'd like to, on behalf of the Fire Safe Council, thank you for your continuing support. Are there any questions?
Questions from the council? No. Thank you, Mark. It just takes so much volunteer time. I sit on that committee, and they spend all year getting ready for this. They're already preparing for next year, and it's just a tremendous event and a tremendous amount of effort that goes into it. So thank you to everyone.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Do we have any public comment on our ceremonial matters? Okay. Okay.
I would just like to thank you for your wonderfully worded proclamation concerning Pride Month. That alphabet soup grows better, bigger, and in my family, we have the B, and we have the G, and we have the L, and we have the T, and who knows what else is out there? And it's just nice that you recognize everybody with love. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, and we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any items from the council? No? Okay, we will open the consent calendar up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. And one of the things I notice is that we usually have change orders on all of our big projects. And when you read these change orders to find out what necessitated them, it's something that was unknown until they got digging in the ground, and then they found out, oh, we have a sewer line where it's not supposed to be, we have a water line that breaks, we have a storm drain that isn't functioning, and all of these things have to be fixed before we can do the project. And I noticed that this Broadway sidewalks project is no exception. The five change orders, and I read every one, and I thought, yep, now it's like Placerville. So aren't we glad that we have a contractor who is willing to work with us and fix all these crazy things that we keep finding in Placerville?
Thank you, Sue. I agree. We're getting it done, slowly but surely. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council.
I'll move the consent.
I'll second.
Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action on the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Do we have person? Okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is Mark Ranger. I have lived in Placerville since around 2000, and I'd like to talk to you about solar rights access to, basically, there's a new Solar Access Act called SB 379, and its purpose is to kind of reduce the cost and time involved in applying for solar power. And it's required, but they've kind of sweetened the pot by making it so that if you apply, you can get up to $40,000 of funding to implement an online system that will basically streamline it and make it so that it takes basically no time to sign up for solar. And this covers both solar panels and batteries. So anyway, so I'm here basically asking that you consider doing it. There's a four-page list of things you basically checkbox and submit, and then you can apply for the funding, basically. So I did ask, and they said as of May 8, there was still $500,000 left to be awarded, and this has to be applied for by June 30, 2024. So anyway, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. If you have information, can you leave it with our city clerk?
I sure can.
Thank you. All right. Do we have other public comments?
Sue Rodman, and I would just like to thank all of our city people and the police department, everyone who helped with the wagon train to make it the great event that it was this year, our merchants, our residents who showed up, the wagons, and thanks to the city council for your support. I hope we can support them again next year.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else?
Hi, today I am Joseph Walker. Joseph Walker was one of the original pioneering scouts, hence the limp and the cane, that braved, blazed the trail. And he blazed the trail for the bidweel, and here's Placerville. And you read the history, and on this event, there were so many challenges. We doubled in size. We brought in new people. Not everybody had the same agenda. They all had the same goal, the Placerville Bell Tower. Pony Express Mail's a bit slow, so we weren't aware that there could have been a toll. We were a little surprised that maybe we'd have to pay a bigger bullion fee, but you waived it, and we're grateful. And we're grateful for all of you being there, physically or in spirit. We're welcomed by the mayor, the banner from Saragosa, the banner for Cerisi, and proudly, I was there every day. I watched it leave. Every day, the banner, "Placerville Welcomes You." And as people shared, what a welcome. Changing roles as Leo Bennett co-shon two years ago, three years ago. Time flies. When I was asked to assist with the little one at Bedford, worked with Terri Zeller, and And this has to be applied for by June 30th, 2024. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. If you have information, can you leave it with our city clerk?
I sure can.
Thank you. All right. Do we have other public comments?
Sue Rodman, and I would just like to thank all of our city people, and the police department, everyone who helped with the wagon train to make it the great event that it was this year. Our merchants, our residents who showed up, the wagons, and thanks to the city council for your support. I hope we can support them again next year.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else?
Hi. Today, I am Joseph Walker. Joseph Walker was one of the original pioneering scouts, hence the limp and the cane, that braised, blazed the trail. And he blazed the trail for the bidwell, and here's Placerville. And you read the history, and on this event, there were so many challenges. We doubled in size. We brought in new people. Not everybody had the same agenda. They all had the same goal, the Placerville Bell Tower. Pony Express Mail's a bit slow, so we weren't aware that there could have been a toll. We were a little surprised that maybe we'd have to pay a bigger bullion fee. But you waived it, and we're grateful. And we're grateful for all of you being there, physically or in spirit. We're welcomed by the mayor, the banner from Saragossa, the banner for Cerise. And proudly, I was there every day. I watched it leave. Every day, the banner, "Placerville Welcomes You." And as people shared, what a welcome. Changing roles, as Leo Bennett co-shon two years ago, three years ago, time flies, when I was asked to assist with the little one at Bedford, worked with Terry Zeller. It was small in Placerville, totally not your fault, just social media had a reputation with the wagon train. They don't love us anymore. I can assure you, as an official Highway 50 wagon train member, they feel loved. And everybody came together. The help from Buried History, Red Paint Collective, Placerville Hardware, Sour Dough, just the entire community turned out. There'll always be some, just like on the wagon train, that may not be completely happy. Hey, I have two ears, and I will listen forever how we can make it better. I wasn't happy. It wasn't what I planned. It was better. And that's the nature when a community comes together. Everybody has a voice. It was so diverse. It was so great. And I love you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo.
My wife wants me back.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Eight point two, are there any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item nine, items pulled from the consent calendar, we have none. Number 10, ordinances, we have none. Number 11, public hearings, 11.1, public hearing for the proposed fiscal year '24, '25 operating and capital improvement program budget proposals. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor No, members of the council. So, tonight is a follow-up to your budget workshop that was held on May 29th. The assumptions in this report are essentially the same, so you'll see a lot of similar numbers. We will cover your sales tax trends, your general fund budget, your other funds within your operating budget, as well as your CIP budget. So, jumping right into sales tax, you saw the last report, I think, your previous meeting, but Bradley Burns, which is your 1% sales tax of the 8.25%, is your most significant local economic indicator. It represents 57% of your total general fund revenue. We do have strong per capita sales tax. It's $604 per person as of '23. And Placerville ranked number 37 out of 539 agencies in '23. And we hope to be number one. I know I say that every year, but we do. So, in the quarter ended December 2023, receipts were down by $51,911, or 3%. Usually, you see a variance between your cash and your, when you remove the, the back taxes that are usually included in that. It was about the same at 3% without the adjustments. And we were in line with the state, which was also down by about 2.5%. And then looking at your contributors, you can see that those that generate sales tax, autos and transportation, 24.48%, building construction, 14.87. And then, kind of jumping over to the left, state and county pool, 28.087. It was kind of interesting, looking back, just as a side note, that's your online sales tax. And back in 2014, that was actually 19%. So, that's grown nine percentage points. In other words, there's more of your sales taxes being generated significantly by online sales tax. The other categories have kind of shrunk a bit. So, when you look at the next slide, which shows the growth by category, you can see autos and transportation, kind of flat, 2.35% down. Building construction up, 1.15. And you can see the others there, the winners and losers. One I do want to point out is your food and drugs. They were down by 25.73, which is pretty steep. However, it does include, one of your major contributors in that category went from annual reporting to quarterly. So, instead of having a full year worth, it only had one quarter. So, three, three quarters less this time. And then looking at your historical sales tax, you can see before the pandemic, and 13, 14, ramping up before the pandemic, we did fairly well. We really didn't have a significant loss in 1920, and then it built up, and then leveled off. The red represents actual cash sales tax. The blue is adjusted for inflation each year. And then green is cumulative inflation, which you can see going across, we're at about the 14, 15 level. Inflation between that time was about 40%. So, your general fund is the only true source of discretionary dollars that you have. It pays for most city services, including public safety, maintenance, street maintenance, parks, and recreation. We did look at, excuse me, we assumed existing program delivery to the greatest extent possible. This was a more challenging budget year. It does include foreseeable projected economic impacts. For example, medical insurance, we anticipate up to 10% increase in that category effective January of '25. Workers' comp, we do know, went up by 25.3%. Of that amount, 16.9 is actual due to experience. So, and then general liability, insurance, and property insurance are also hardened, about a 14.81%. And then property insurance, we're looking at about a 20% increase. So, typically, 3% to 5% you would see, and you can see they're much larger numbers. So, it just kind of gives you the landscape we're dealing with in trying to balance our budget this year. And then pension, unfunded actuarial liability, employer contributions went up by 16.5%. Electricity, 17%. We did assume the existing employee commitments that were negotiated with one of the unions. The contingency, usually, this, this current year, you had $100,000. We actually assumed zero because we had such a difficult time balancing the budget. Conference training, travel, net of police standards and training, 27,000. Department head recruitment, which is a one-time cost, $19,000, and then $4,300 for computer equipment. No CIP budgets coming out of your general fund. It's just too tight. No prepayment. You may recall, this current year, we set aside 1% of payroll, plus $500,000 to pay down our pension liability. Can't do that this year. So, retiring medical insurance costs is pay-as-you-go, no pre-funding. We did begin with a status quo budget. Looking at that, out of the gate, we were over a million-dollar deficit, or 9.45%. So, I want to applaud your staff, rolled up their sleeves, looked for any way to save money, raise revenue. And we were able to cut and raise revenue by about $1,087,000 to balance the budget, essentially. We've got a small deficit, but of that, of those cuts includes five frozen positions. So, these are positions that are vacant. There's no employees behind them. But they are important positions, and so they're listed here on this slide. And you can see that of the total, 552,516 is to the general fund. One that looks a little odd is the senior civil engineer, because it's only 49,000, that's Jeep, right? Well, it's actually net of cost recovery. So, there's 167, $160,000 in CIP cost recovery net that offsets that number. That's why it's so low. And then debt service, just a reminder, our, our bills that we have to pay primarily because of the wastewater treatment plant improvements. So, you can see total debt service, principal and interest, 2.8 million. General fund, 131,000. Good news, we did pay off our 2019 equipment lease. So, that's saving us about $56,000 in annual debt service for the general, or across all funds. So, and then transfers, in local government, we use fund accounting, which means that we can move money from one fund to another. For example, gas tax, your highway user tax, we transfer that from the gas tax fund to your general fund to pay for day-to-day road maintenance. And that number actually declined by about $11,000. That's because there's more alternative fuel vehicles on the road, and that tax, and our population's about the same. And so, that number is shrinking. I anticipate, unfortunately, that number will continue to shrink in the coming years. General CIP to general fund, the Lata grant that helps pay for our senior maintenance, or excuse me, senior management analyst from the general CIP fund where that grant is. Cannabis community benefit, no transfer in. General fund to parking, $8,600 for employee parking from the general fund. And then, one big, one big difference is our subsidy of Measure J. So, that's increasing from 417,000 to 4, 703,000, or 285,000, so 68% increase. No transfers out for CIP projects. And then, general fund to general liability, transfer out, up by 47,000 due to increases in property and general liability insurance. And then looking at your general fund budget, you can see that the revised budget for '23, '24 was 11.49 million, and our projected out of the gate, 11,225. So, already, you're down before, and you've got all these inflationary impacts, right? Expenditures before adjustments, 11,725. Transfers out net, 559,000. So, at that point, you had a $1,060 deficit. Then we add the, or subtract the adjustments we spoke about earlier, $1,087, $19,000 for the department head recruitment, $4,300 for equipment, and then conference training, travel, 27. So, in net, $1,036. So, that leaves you with a $23,000 deficit. $19,000 of that is one time because of the recruitment, but we hope to get that down to $19,000 or zero by, by the time we bring the budget back for adoption. So, and then kind of drilling down to the numbers, you can see, again, sales tax, right out of the gate, $210,000 down. All other taxes, that's your property, business license, TOT, franchise taxes, garbage, electricity, cable, that's up slightly by 34. That also includes your cannabis tax. Construction permits, slightly down. Development's slowing down. We have a lot of projects in the hopper, but new construction applications coming in, anticipating 106,000 less. Intergovernmental revenue is your property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, up by 53,000. Charges for services, anything from planning, parks and rec, engineering fees, just a slight increase there of $4,000 net. So, fines and forfeiture is basically balanced, or, you know, no increase, $50. Use of money in property, interest, we're doing better with life, is primarily that increase. And then other financing sources is indirect costs to our water sewer fund. So, total revenue budget, 11.29 million, or 201,000 down, or 1.75%. And then looking at the expenditure side of the ledger, you can see by department, again, this includes all those cuts, the $1,087 in cuts, and that did include a little bit of revenue, but primarily cuts there. And you can see across funds, one I want to point out is the non-departmental. It's a big decrease of $596,000. That's primarily because we're not transfer, paying down pension UAL by 500,000. So, that number shrunk by 500,000 and some change. And we're also not doing CIP projects. So, your transfers out are included in non-departmental costs. So, total expenditures, 11,315,000, down by 1.3 million. One of the things I want to point out, too, is last year, again, we had a little over a million-dollar deficit. And that's because we ramped up $3 million in fund balance. And we thought, let's use some of that to pay down our debt. Let's do some projects. Let's do, buy some equipment. So, last year's budget had that baked in, and now we're having to balance, plus all these inflationary impacts. So, that's why that difference is so large, that And then looking at your general fund dollar, you know, just each dollar, what it represents. Police, 32 cents. Community services, 27. Non-departmental, 11. Administration, 8. Development services, 7. Public works, 7. Finance, 5. Engineering, 3. And city council, 1 cent. You're very affordable. And then comparing your revenues to expenditures, this just kind of helps you visualize the revenue compared to your departments. And you can see that sales tax represents about, community services and police represent the same amount as sales tax, just to give you an idea. And this kind of shows you your net revenues. You can see that the blues revenue, and then red's expenditure. We had some really good years, '21 through '23. And then we had planned, again, spending down the $3 million we accumulated, and now we're trying to balance our budget for '24, '25. Any questions so far? Okay. Moving on to water, one of your larger funds. So, water actually is doing okay. It does look like we have a decrease. We do have a decrease in revenue, going from 3.3 in '23, '24 to 2.6. That's because development connection fees are down. So, we had some large, we anticipate receiving some pretty large impact fees due to our affordable housing apartment projects primarily, phases four and six, and a few others. So, that number declined. User revenue is about flat. You know, it's doing okay, but it's no growth at this point. And then proposed expenditures, going from 2.3 million to 2.4. Net transfers out, rising from 204 to 251 because of property and general liability insurance. So, at that point, we had a $53,000 deficit. We found $138,000 in adjustments, added a little equipment, capital outlay, 58,000. Conference training and travel, 2,600, 7,600, excuse me, $76,000 in adjustments, leaving you with $23,000 surplus for projects. And then sewer, similar story. Revenue's down slightly because impact fees or connection fees being down. User fees are fine. Proposed operating expenditures, rising from 7.7 to 7.9. Transfers, or transfers in net, 1.1 million. That's primarily your Measure H being transferred in for projects and debt service against your property and liability insurance. So, you start with a $519,000 surplus. We did adjust. And one thing I do want to mention, both water and sewer funds, we did assume going to zero on our contingency for unforeseen expenditures to balance each budget. So, that's included in the 510,000. Capital outlay, 151,000. Conference training and travel, 23,000. 335,000 in net adjustments for a total surplus of 855,000. Basically, net Measure H funds for projects. And then your smaller funds, I don't want to go through all of these unless there's any questions, but you can see Measure L. We don't show any expenditures because that's going to be used for CIP. Measure H is, we transfer all of that to the sewer enterprise fund, so we show that there. You can see that Measure J is balanced. However, there's a pretty significant subsidization from the general fund. Let's see here, the ARPA fund, let's talk about that. So, we did, as one of our budget balancing strategies for this year, was to use, we have a public safety billing and environmental review CIP that really didn't have much expenditures. We're basically recommending liquidating that for now, and then using that for equipment, general fund equipment, for that purpose. So, and then what's new, we have our Cottonwood Park CFD fund. That's a brand-new fund for Cottonwood phases four and six. Really no, on this next slide, no comments there unless there's any questions. And then, your total budget, you can see '23, '24 revised revenue, 29,765,000. Proposed budget, 28,457,000. Expenditures, you can see the difference there. Revenues, down, 1.3 million. Expenditures up by 904, or 3.53%. And you end up with a little over 3.7 million for projects and other, and reserves. So, and then we do have, I think, a total of 16 projects we completed this past year. Been very busy working on projects. They're listed here. And the next section is our CIP budget. With that, I'd like to hand it over to our city engineer, McConnell, to go through her projects.
Thank you. The first two projects listed here are two new projects. The first is the Tunnel Street Maintenance Project, and then the US-50 Trip to Green. We also have two new water reclamation facility projects. And then, the next few projects are all projects in final design. So, additional budget will be going to final design for most of those. The Smith Flat Road Project is our next big push to get to construction. So, that one has a more significant budget. And we also have some other large improvement projects, the Canal Street, Phase 1 and Phase 2. We'll also have federal funds with local match. And we have a few other small projects, like Sherman and Sheridan Street, and the storm drain replacement at Upper Broadway and Point View. There's also funding assumed for the Measure H and Measure L construction reserve. And then the next couple of projects are not mine.
Thanks, Melissa. So, the next one is the totlot replacement. And Mr. Yule, if you could cover that?
Thank you, Dave. We have three different CIP projects to introduce tonight. The tot layer replacement project at Orchard Hill is a new CIP. We're going to try to upgrade the equipment out there that we're having a hard time finding parts for, and it's just deteriorated through the weather. We're also working on the bell tower roof placement project. Our beloved bell tower's in need of desperate repair. And we also are still working on the Lyons Park softball irrigation system project, which is about 90% complete. We should be done with that pretty quick. We should be done with that pretty quick.
Thanks, Steve. And the last one is the lead water service replacement, and Mr. Stone will cover that one.
Thanks, Mr. One. This is a project that we've been working on since 2020. At that time, we were directed by State Division of Drinking Water to investigate and replace four-hundred suspected unknown water surfaces that could potentially contain lead fittings. At that time, they directed us to investigate and replace forty of them per year. We've been on track with that, so we'll do another forty this year. And I would just also add to that, the water is completely safe. Last couple rounds of lead and copper sampling have shown none detected in the system, so.
Thank you, Nick. So the total draft C I P budget is six million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three. You can see the funding sources there at the bottom of that slide. One thing I do want to point out, measure H shows one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, which exceeds the amount net of the sewer enterprise fund. That's because we have carryover from anticipated carrier from this year. There's actually a sewer line project that, for Hawking Street, it was four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we ended up not needing, so that will be liquid, I talked to Melissa about it, we're going to liquidate that, and that'll roll right into fund balance for other projects, so we're good there. And then upcoming items, so what we're asking tonight is that you direct staff to bring back the budget on June twenty-fifth for adoption. And then we are in the midst of a water wastewater cost of service study, looking at your rates. We haven't adjusted those since, well, the last study was done in 2018, and then the last increase was back in 2022. But updating that, coming back with a workshop in August is our goal, and then also updating our master fee schedule, all but community services. Community Services does a great job keeping their fees up, the rest of us have some work to do. So, and then what we'd like to do is come back to you in March to look at your mid-year budget report and those five frozen positions, to see if there's a way to restore those, because they're very important, we really need them, it's just right now we have to hold back. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this report. Thank you.
Can I make one comment before we go to questions? I just want to thank Dave and all his work, and also Melissa and all of the department heads actually on their work, but one thing that was interesting to me, I prepared a document for, actually for the mayor today, I wanted to mention that, that in terms of street projects going forward, and it was interesting to me to add those up, over the next two years, we are going to be spending over thirty-nine million dollars on road projects, thirty-nine million dollars. So thank you, Melissa, I know that's a big, a big, a heavy lift for you to get done, but we have that money. Those are between grants and bridge money that we received, we have already been awarded, and our measure L funds have been a big part of that, and been able to leverage that and get more funding for the city, so want to compliment city staff for their work on that. So thank you.
Yes, thank everybody. I mean, this was a really hard year, really hard to balance the budget, and you guys are just all superstars, as usual. We appreciate you. Do we have questions from the council? No? Okay, we'll open this for public comment.
Leo Bennett-Koshon, proud grandfather of three kids in Placerville. So my public administration degree covers budgeting, and, you know, one of the little things they drill into you, and I'm sure you've heard it, is if you want to know an elected body's values, ask to read the budget, because it'll tell you your values. So I'm just calling your attention, since we went through the wagon train, and, you know, everybody's doing the best they can, but it was the first year where the council, you know, revisited what Terry Zeller and everybody set up a couple of years ago, you had an agenda item that seemed to imply you might, you know, change everything at the last minute, and you have an August twenty-fourth event, block party coming up on Facebook, bands in place, all of that. What I heard in the conversation was that the council will clarify, you know, what are these new policies going to look like? Are we all going to have to pay a cost? All these conversations, and I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of angst out there. So I urge you to make it an agenda item, because this isn't a line item budget, and that's fine, but the old way, can anybody drill down and see, you know, on the line items, where the penny on the dollar part for the police department that's providing security for your community services that do major parts of this event and public works? Plus, I would urge you, if you are going to raise these prices, as have been in your various spreadsheets, there's alternatives. This was the first year that we had wonderful police security, but we're a family-friendly event. In three years, we've only had the homeless incident that member Saragosa helped us with, and you can get a private security company to provide that level of security. You know, why, your overtime budget is almost more, it is more actually, is higher than your regular salary budget for the police departments according to budget documents. And, you know, that's above and beyond for those officers, but that stresses people. So I just think, you know, take a look at everything, give direction to staff, you know, everybody will go wherever way makes sense, but we need you to make those decisions. Thank you for taking my input.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sue Rodman. You can't spend what you don't have. And I think this is a tough, tough budget year for everybody. And I think we do need to get down to the nitty-gritty on some of the things that the city has been able to support in the past and may not be able to do this next year, and let people know what those are going to be and what they can expect, because otherwise we get to the same thing we had with the wagon train, where the week before the wagon train was supposed to start to take place, the city was saying, we don't think we can afford it. Well, let's not do that to people again this next year. Let's be really clear about what things we really can afford to support and will support, and which ones are going to have to fund their own.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Dave, this was a tough one. It's easy to balance a budget when you have lots of money coming in, because then you can do lots of extra things, and everybody, you're a hero. When you have to tell them no, that's when it gets really tough, and I think he was, he made some of the tough calls here, and so did our staff, and I think they did a great job.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion, motion.
I'll start off just with some comments. Again, yeah, I want to thank staff for all the hard work, because obviously it wasn't an easy budget to come up with, and my guess is we're going to have a couple of these, you know, for the next couple of years, just because it doesn't look like the numbers are going to change too much. But I'm hopeful for a quick recovery, but, you know, time will tell. I think, I think those were wise words from the public. We certainly do need to give, I think, people a good sense of things as we move forward on what we can pay for and what we can't. I think we've all have made those intimations, you know, through these discussions throughout the year, that going forward, things are probably going to be different. We were fortunate to have some federal infusion of dollars, as well as with so much money pumped into the economy, there was lots of spending going on, and so it inflated some numbers that probably wouldn't be there otherwise, so. And I think, and wisely, we all said all along, like, there was a lot of one-time spending, because we knew that this stuff wasn't going to go on forever, and so that reality is starting to come home to roost, and so we're going to have to look at things, you know, even with a more of a fine comb, what's the term? I can't even think of it.
Fine-tooth comb.
Fine-tooth comb. That's true. I think I do, maybe, I don't know. But anyway, so I do just want to forewarn the public on that, that I think it will be a much tighter budget. I mean, our main thing are those C I P projects, to make sure that those things are getting funded, that we're getting our roads done, that we have the police on the streets that we need, so all those things as opposed to events, other things that are really extra to some degree. So that's just my forewarning going forward, but just wanted to really thank staff for the work put in on this budget. Thank you.
I'll just add to that as well, specifically to events, I did have a motion that passed that we are going to require applications from all events that want to happen in 2025 in December of this year, so December 2024. If you want to have an event, you'll have to submit your application, and then we will discuss, once we have all of those applications, what we are and are not going to allow next year, and what we're going to pay and not pay for. So that discussion is coming, and that's the timeline on it.
Yeah, I think, I think our priorities are crystal clear. We prioritize public health and safety, we prioritize our roads, streets, and sewers, we prioritize the things that keep the city safe and make it run. That is our job, and we are doing the best we can in the face of a tight budget this year. I've lived through, and I wasn't here for the crazy ARPA days, but I was here when the economy was generally improving, and budgets and, you know, things were kind of moving along, and they're always tough decisions, there's always, even when you have, even when you have more money than you have today, it's a tough one. My recollection of this budget is, is that we have not budgeted any money, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, except for, what is the status of our events budget in the draft? Because my recollection was we, there's just some staff time.
Good question. So we are decentralized, meaning each department develops their own budget.
Right.
And so I would ask each department to, you know, Steve and Nick and the chief to chime in on what they assumed, but what I saw in the variances is similar trends, meaning that our budgets are in aggregate.
Right, right, right.
Everything together, but the trends, and we did cut, so that's the other part that's a little tricky, so I'd be happy to, or encourage staff to talk about that.
As far as from the public services side of things, we have traditionally had a budget for those events that are run specifically by the city, so you're talking about your fishing derby, our Rise and Shine Event, and the two community cleanup days, so that's within our special event budget, but it doesn't go further than that.
Okay, all right, maybe, okay. Yes.
Can I mention? Go ahead, mention.
Well, let me, let me add, and I'll, for Nick and Joe, they can, they can add to this, but I believe we do have funding in for what we've been calling these legacy events, and I'll talk about, I'm talking about Halloween, the tree lighting, and the parade, the Christmas parade. Those three, I do, we do have funding in there to cover those, but only for those three at this point in this year's budget.
Yes.
So I was going to bring this up later, but I'll bring it up now because we're on this discussion. I'm proposing that we have on July thirtieth a workshop on this particular topic, and we'll go through the things that council member Gottberg brought up and made the motion to do. We hope to have more formalized process and program designed by, at that point, that we can show this is what we plan to do going forward. We'll present some of those, those cost items, so we've already presented some of that, but we've tried to refine some of that. So that's my proposal, is that we do, that's a fifth Tuesday, in case you were wondering. So, and, and that, good or bad, that in July, we generally cancel the second meeting in July, which would be the twenty-third, so we'll cancel the twenty-third and make you come on the thirtieth, if that's okay. So hopefully that schedule works for everyone. We generally try to use those as a special workshop session when we have those fifth Tuesdays, so we can talk about that further, but that is my hope, is that we can put some things together. It's going to be interesting, and that we have an interim community services director, and hopefully have a new one soon. But Steve's been doing a great job putting together some things, and we've started that process to look at all of the issues that we're going to have to address as part of that, and I think we've got a good beginning together for that, so.
So I have a question, if we typically cancel the July meeting, could we use that date for our workshop?
Rather than the thirtieth?
Well, since it's already on everybody's schedule already.
We could, however, I know that people scheduled their, I'd have to check with staff, some people scheduled their vacations anticipating that.
They just assume that we won't have a meeting, I get it, okay.
Because we traditionally have not had that meeting.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, if there's a conflict with the thirtieth, too, I want to make sure that we can make that work, so.
We'll rely on you to reach out to everybody, including staff, to see if we can make that work.
Okay.
Okay. All right, do we have any further discussion on the budget, eleven point one? Okay, do I have someone who wants to direct staff to bring back the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget and C I P as presented for adoption at the June twenty-fifth meeting? Option one?
I will move that.
Hold a second.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to our discussion and action items, twelve point one, consider the use of five thousand dollars received annually from the Department of Resources, Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle, Beverage Container Recycling City/County Payment Program for the purchase of one-set double-station trash recycle receptacles from Big Belly. Is this Mr. Rivas or Mr. Morris? You both have your name on here.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and start, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just start with a little background. The city does receive five thousand annually from the Department of Resources and Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle's Beverage Container Recycling City/County Payment Program. This funding is available to cities and counties specifically for beverage container recycling and litter cleanup activities that are authorized under the California Beverage Container and Recycling and Litter Reduction Act. The city has utilized these funds in the past to purchase dual trash recycle receptacles that are placed along Main Street, within our city parks, and we've used some of the monies to fund cleanup activities along city streets and the parking garage. So over time, the city has replaced, if you recall, its single-bin trash receptacles throughout the city with these dual trash recycle receptacles to allow for the separation of recyclable materials, such as those we see on Main Street in the downtown area and in the parks. The green ornate dual-bin receptacles currently in use along Main Street have had some issues, including susceptibility to dumpster diving, break-ins, breaking of the locks, and they currently are not adequately containing the trash within the interior carts, leading to sanitation issues and trash issues, littering of the streets. Staff has been looking for an alternative type of trash recycle receptacles that can eliminate some of these issues to allow better management of the trash and for the separation of recyclables. Staff has been looking closely at the Big Belly brand, which you see up on the screen, and there's pictures and specs that are contained in your staff report. And this is a pilot program, so our desire is to purchase one single double-station trash receptacle, recycle receptacle. The base unit would include the double station with chutes, foot pedals, massage panels, and a partial custom wrap, front and back. Staff is, would like the council to consider the addition of two options as well, and that would be an ashtray and tubular locks. And the cost breakdown is within the staff report, I'll go over it briefly. The base price for the double-station unit is forty-seven hundred dollars. The ashtray will add another two hundred dollars to the price, and the tubular locks will add another hundred dollars to the unit, adding for a subtotal of five thousand dollars. It eight and a half, or an eight and a quarter sales tax, that adds another little over four hundred dollars to the price. Shipping is eight hundred and seventy dollars, quite a bit. The total would be, and this is rounded, six thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Eldorado Disposal has offered to partner with the city in the pilot program, and will contribute thirteen hundred and twenty-four dollars towards the purchase. Staff has yet to determine the location of the Big Belly Staff has yet to determine the location of the Big Belly double unit station, though we do have some options for the council to consider. Staff is recommending that the council approve the resolution, and that's as revised. So each of you should have received a revised resolution. These changes are not substantive. Basically, all they're doing is clarifying that the amount of money that will be donated by Eldorado Disposal for the project, we just wish that to be included as, basically, that the council will approve the amount of $1,300, $1,324 from Eldorado Disposal. Purchase is the same, but it's a budget allocation of the total amount of $6,323. So that's all this change essentially does. So we're asking that you do, do that, approve the, the resolution for the purpose of approximately $6,300 to be placed within the city right away. Approve a $5,000 budget appro, or approve a $5,000 budget appropriation out of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, CalRecycle Beverage Container Recycling Payment Program for, for purchase of this, of this receptacle, and then approving a budget appropriation in the amount of $1,324 from Eldorado Disposal for purchase of the same. With that, we can certainly go into discussion of the unit itself and possible locations. I'll turn it over to City Manager Morris, if he has anything else he wishes to add in regards to this pilot program. Thank you.
So again, just reiterating what Pierre said, I meant to actually bring some pictures of our current garbage cans, and the, I think you've all seen the amount of trash that collects underneath those, and why, why we're looking at this. Doesn't seem like a real severe item, but it, it's important to keep our downtown looking, looking good, and that's why we, we actually started looking at this probably over a year ago. It's been quite a while that we've been looking at different options. Dave, can you go, we have an example, go one more, Dave. Yeah, this one. So one of our concerns, I don't know, I think some of you were on the council when we actually purchased the garbage cans that we have out there now, and the idea was to try to match somewhat the, the downtown historic look and et cetera that we have. Obviously, these don't exactly meet that, but we do have options. These are just some examples. You, you can see the front and back that we put on examples of, these would be wraps that would be on them. And then the two side things are hard to see, and that's the, on the top of the picture, the two outside looks. Those would be on the, on the sides of each of these, so coming down the sidewalk, you would see these. This particular one, I pulled off the poster from our Spooktacular event, or the Halloween event from last year. So that's what that is. I apologize, it's a little small to see, but that's actually a changeable message board that could go on there. It could go anything from advertising events to potentially a business advertising on there if they wanted to. So there's, there's a lot of options that those could be, could be used for. And again, the wrap, we could change this. We could use, for example, pictures, the same pictures we have on our banners perhaps, or something for the wraps, to try to bring that historic look into that by doing that. So that's the goal. The one other thing I wanted to mention that is in the report, you saw the cost of these, $6,300. I'm assuming the shipping cost per unit may go down a little bit, because this is just one unit, we'd be getting many, but we need about 23 to 24 of these. And if you multiply that out, we're talking about $145,000. We are not proposing that that comes from general fund or anything like that. We want to try this out and see, and see if it works. We do believe that, in the past at least, there's been quite a bit of funding available for recycling dollars through grants and programs, competitive grants that we haven't really gone after. So we think there may be opportunities, and Eldorado Disposal has also mentioned that they have people that can help us apply for those grants and go after those grants to try to secure the funding. The first step, obviously, is to see if this is really what works and is what we want, and so that's why we wanted to look at that. Pierre and I have been talking about location. He likes the location in the garage. I like the one out on the street. We're kind of open to, to both. The thought is, we want people to see this and get their opinion on it, not just, or not just the functionality, but also, you know, what are, how does it look? Does it work, and et cetera? So I think either location, I don't really have a strong preference. I think the one, what Pierre likes about the, the location at the bottom of the stairs on the west end of the garage is that that one is heavily used. There's a lot of smoking that goes on there for the ashtray that, that we will put on here, on here. And it is also, it gets vandalized quite a bit. So it would be a good test for the unit if we placed it in that location. So with that, Pierre, if you have anything else you can add, and then we can go from there.
Mayor, if I may, just one, one additional comment I'd like to make. Staff has spent considerable time actually examining these, these containers in various cities. They're, they were heavily used at a major Kaiser hospital down in Southern California that I was at not too long ago. They're widely used in the Bay Area. City of Berkeley uses them, Albany uses them, I believe Oakland uses them as well, so I've examined them. They have different options of openings. We like the pull-down with the bar, because it should hopefully prevent the ability of dumpster diving, where people going in there and pulling out the trash, which usually once, once the trash comes out and the recyclables come out, the trash doesn't go back in. So they're very robust. I only saw one that, that was broken into, and it had a different kind of lock. That's why we're recommending the tubular lock. I think that's, that's less likely to be able to allow somebody to break into the unit, so I want to add that.
Thank you, yeah. And, you know, if we have these also, it's going to reduce staff time in cleaning up and, and maintenance-ing those things also, which is, is a big plus. I personally like the idea, put it right smack in the middle of Main Street as a, as a pilot project to get people's feedback, but that, that's just my thought initially. Do you have any questions before we open this for public comment?
How, how hard would it be to move? I mean, are these things heavy? They, I've seen them. They look robust. Or is it, I don't know.
No, I've never lifted one up. I, I think if we look in the specifications, they probably give a dry weight.
They give a dry, yeah.
270 pounds? Okay, 270 pounds.
So we could move it around. We could test it in different places.
How do they attach to the ground?
Oh yeah, it says 150 pounds right here.
How do they attach, how do they attach to the ground? Do you have to bolt them to the ground? Okay.
Other questions?
I had a question, just because there's a lot of area on them, and if we don't wrap them, are, is the material that they're made out of, like graffiti resistant? Because the one thing I would hate is that these things become like magnets for people writing all over them. That's the one thing we have with our others, is that it's kind of hardly write on those. But these seem like maybe nice locations for that, so just wondering.
You know, I really don't know if they are tagging resistant. I didn't see any of the cans out on the East Bay tagged, or the ones at the hospital, so that's interesting. I, I could see them being a magnet. In fact, maybe we shouldn't even be mentioning it.
I just, yeah, that's what I hate, be to become a.
But I think if, if we have wraps on them, I think that would be a way of just, you know, I would think that graffiti is probably more easily removed from a wrap than actually on, on the material of these.
Just my last question was, just a more of a global question, because I, I agree we need to have better, and we reduce staff time and not have trash on the floor for people going through them. I'm just wondering, was, how much other, did we look at other ones? I mean, is there like an MSA list where we could just go buy these things that's cheaper? I don't know.
We've been looking at different types of receptacles for several years now, and this is the one that really popped out, mainly because, you know, on my travels, I, I saw this Big Belly. I think, I think the city manager saw one somewhere as well, and so we started exploring this particular model. You know, the very, this, this company specializes in, in the Big Belly. And it's called, I think the main name of the company is Big Belly Solar. You can get these deluxe models that are solar-powered, they, they're compacters, and they'll compact the garbage, and they will, they have electronics where they could, they have special telemetry, so they could tell the city, this one's full and this one isn't, and, you know, to allow for that kind of management. So I think that's helpful for, for very large cities, especially cities that manage their own garbage collection. But I think as a standard model, we just want to make sure that it works, and it's going to, the trash and the, and the recyclables, once they get in there, they stay in there, and it keeps the surroundings clean.
Thank you.
Does, does the big, I would hope it does, but does the Big Belly hold more than our current receptacles?
I think they do hold a little bit more.
A little bit more, because I'm wondering if they hold more, maybe we don't need to buy it.
There are the containers inside in the back. That's how Eldorado Disposal will access.
Okay.
Through the back, and it's of similar size.
Nick, Nick, what's the volume on the, the round garbage cans? Are those 50 gallon, do you know? Yeah, because that's, these are 50 gallon also.
Oh, okay, so they're, they're the same.
I think they're the same capacity.
And you mentioned a certain kind of lock? A tubular lock?
Yeah, it's a tubular lock.
Is, is that what is shown there in the picture? That is not a tubular lock. Okay, so we would be looking at something different.
Yeah, that's, that's the standard lock.
Yeah, that, that, yeah. I was on the council before I got voted off the island, and we made this decision, and I want to apologize to everybody. We did it with the best of intentions. It's just mind-numbing what people will do to go through your trash. Anyway, I like the Big Belly.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, let's open this for public comment.
Leo Bennett, Kosheun. Retired schoolteacher. I have one word, and then I'll have a lot. Stop! This is always what teachers did, the brightest, newest thing. I just looked it up. Other cities don't have good experiences. It is a graffiti magnet. It's complicated. Things break. There's so many problems. The headline is, "Big Belly, a Waste Producer." So I just think you need to look, look at other people, and it doesn't save staff time that I can see in these other cities. So it's all very complicated, and yeah, you have some problems. But from my perspective, what the county puts out at the playground in Pollock Pines and other places, nice, big, solid, resistant insides their trash can, and there's tons of trash in there, because people drop it down the chute, but, you know, it's just a regular old trash can. You hit these things, they cost a lot to fix, a lot more than what we got. So yeah, it's bright, yeah, it's shiny, and this is a pilot, but you're, you're approving an idea to replace a whole bunch. You're replacing $5,000, yet at another meeting, you're like, oh, we have no money to help you guys and all that, so it's just discord messages. And I looked it up, and you can spend this money to fix the water fountain over by your public restrooms, that's one of the projects, and you can use it for litter pickup. You know, you move your money around, take this money with restrictions, and spend it on your cleanups, and now you've got a little bit more money to move around. So I urge you, stop and think, like I always told my students. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I'd just like to ask staff, my understanding, this is a grant that can only be spent on this specific thing. Can you comment on that?
We are allowed to spend it on the purchase of these, these trash bins. We did buy a number of them for the city parks, and they are very, very robust. They're the, they're the more of the concrete ones, because out in a park, they're subject to much greater abuse. These, I want to point out, first I want to say, I've tried to reach out to City of Albany and Berkeley, and they never got back to me. I don't know why. But anyways, this is the standard model. It's doesn't going to, it's not solar, it doesn't have the electronics, doesn't have the telemetry. It's just a basic, you know, canister with the chutes for the trash and for the recyclables. So it's, you know, we don't think it's, has a lot of parts that are going to break, like, like, like I could see with a more complicated trash receptacle with electronics.
Thank you. I, I just wanted the public to understand, this is not $5,000 from our general fund that could be spent anywhere else. Also, we did do those garbage cans out at the parks, which are a great improvement over the trash receptacles we had previously, but they do constantly have the lids flipped off, people going through them. That is still constantly a, a problem, although they are much better than the ones that we had. Vice Mayor, you keep clicking your button. Do you have something?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing constructive.
I would just say, you know, I like the idea of a pilot project. We do pilot projects all the time in my career as a scientist, and you try it in a small fashion, like one trash can, and you see how it works. And if we get a bunch of graffiti, or we get a bunch of trash on the ground, then we know this isn't going to be a viable option, and we don't expand it. So, you know, I like the idea of, of trying it out. I like the idea of a location that has been a problem location for us, so taking a location where we've had, you know, some of the most problems, and picking that as the location to see how it does.
Right, I, I agree, and if it doesn't work out, we can always put it in a park. It probably won't be a lost money, so any other discussion? No? Do we have a motion?
I move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
No.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor no?
Aye.
Order one, motion passes.
Okay, let's, moves us to 12.2. Consider approving a contract with REY Engineers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $57,500 for a drainage maintenance plan for the Lions Park as part of the Lions Park Softball Field Irrigation System Replacement Project, authorizing the interim director of Community Services to execute the same and approving a $50,000 budget appropriation from the Cannabis Community Benefit Fund for said project. Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. The current drainage system at Lions Park has deteriorated to the point of creating a potential unsafe condition throughout the park. Drainage-related concerns include inadequate capacity in the drainage swale running along the northwest side of the softball fields, filled storm drain pipes, and inadequate grading throughout the park. The existing condition causes seasonal flooding of the ballfields, restrooms, and parking lot. Decomposed granite walking trails suffer from erosion damage during the winter months. The city approved $137,500 in the 23, 24 capital improvement budget for field improvements at the park. Recently, the Cannabis Community Benefit Committee recognized the need and recommended an additional $50,000 for the project to bring the total to $187,500. In reviewing the project, it was determined that the scope change was necessary to achieve the desired outcome, and that the drainage and grading should be addressed concurrently with irrigation and turf improvements. If approved, the scope of services will include a conceptual drainage maintenance plan, followed by an improvement plan complete with technical specifications and estimated construction costs. Once that's completed, REY will then assist city staff with bidding documents and technical specifications if needed. The cost of the proposed agreement is not to exceed $57,500. The proposed cost for services is within the existing capital improvement project budget with the remaining balance of $81,386 for construction of the project. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have questions from the council? No? Well, I can say I'm, I'm very excited. As someone who spends entirely too much time at Lions Park, I've been watching those walkways just degrade. People who used to be able to use them, not being able to use them, who have to use walkers and things like that, hoping that addresses that water coming down. It's eroding the road. I've seen the garbage truck not be able to get up there at certain times during the wet season, so it really needs a lot of work for the softball fields and all those things. So we'll open this for public comment.
Ms. Rodman, resident of Placerville. If we're going to charge people to play softball on our fields, we have an obligation then to provide them with a softball field that is worth paying for. to provide them with a softball field that is worth paying for. And in order to have a softball field that's worth paying for, the drainage has to be adequate, the sprinkler system has to be adequate, and the turf has to be adequate. This project seems like it finally puts those pieces together, and we would have actually some decent softball fields. So I think this is a good idea.
Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I agree, we need good fields. We have a park. I always want to point this out, because not everybody understands it. The fees that softball players pay, pay for their umpires, they pay for their scorekeepers, and they pay to prep the field. They do not pay to maintain the field. So it's just been a contentious issue, and I just want everyone to understand, none of the softball fields or fees are actually paying for those field maintenance. All right. Any other questions, comments from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this project. It's a much-needed project, and I'm happy to move it forward.
I'll second.
Okay, can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you. That moves us to item 13, council reports from other agencies. We'll start with Eldorado County Transit Authority. They finalized the 2425 operating budget and capital improvement plan and budget. They also approved bus stop improvements for surveillance and lighting, which includes the Placerville station, so that part's exciting for us. Transportation Commission.
You write notes.
I do write notes. The items that are of interest, I think, were they finalized the Greater Placerville Wildfire Evacuation Preparedness Community Safety and Resilience Study is finished. That was a big lift, so exciting to see that finally done. And they approved the 2025 to 2045 Eldorado County Regional Plan kickoff that they're going to start, so. Lasco?
We did not meet, however, there is currently a public member vacancy. So if you are a registered voter in Eldorado County, and you don't work for any of the government agencies that already have seats, and would like to apply, applications are due by July 10th.
Thank you. Seco?
We meet in Yuba County this, next week.
Great. Pioneer?
We meet next week.
Placerville Fire Safe, well, we heard an update from Mr. Acuna, and so we'll bring it to Opportunity Knox.
Yes, we did have a meeting. I think the two items of note for the council is on the Navigation Center update, they said that they are currently looking at the sewer capacity as the limiting factor on number of tiny homes and occupants for the jail property. So that is something that they mentioned. And then the other thing is that we did approve policies and procedures for a new homeless prevention program, that for fairly small dollar amounts with set usages, like under $1,000, those could be given out and then reimbursed, as long as it fell within that category in those dollar amounts, with some limits, like a $10,000 maximum lifetime, and I think $5,000 for a year. So that will be a new program going into place, and it would be through the various organizations that are like providers in the community. But rather than seeking approval for everyone, if it falls within the like set requirements, they will be able to do it and get reimbursement versus getting approval in advance going forward.
Great, thank you. Item, do we have any public comment on item 13? Seeing none, we'll bring it to number 14, requests for future agenda items. Seeing none, we'll bring it to item 15, city manager and staff reports. 15.1, Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, PEAK vacancy and recruitment announcement. Mrs. O'Connell?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am announcing the resignation of Paul Godwin, a member of the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, otherwise known as PEAK, due to plans to reside outside city limits in the coming year. Mr. Godwin was appointed to PEAK in March of 2023 to fill an unexpired term ending in March of 2025. We want to thank Mr. Godwin for his valued participation on the committee and wish him well in his future endeavors. So this brings me to my second announcement, which is the vacancy that this now leaves on the committee. As mentioned, this is an unexpired term ending March of 2025, and is also one of the three member-at-large representations. Staff intends to open an application period to all city residents interested in serving on this committee, which, for the public's knowledge, was formed back in 2012 to provide advice and recommendations to the city council, planning commission, and staff on economic development activities within the city. The seven-member body would establish and implement an economic development plan and address the citywide economic development issues. According to the resolution establishing the committee, vacancies shall be filled by appointment by the city council members who made the original appointment, which in this case was then Vice Mayor No and Councilmember Yarborough, otherwise known as the City Council Interview Subcommittee. The appointment would then be subject to confirmation by the majority of the city council at a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Staff intends to open the application period this Friday, June 14th, and will close it on Friday, July 19th at 5:00 PM. Confirmation of the Subcommittee's appointments will be tentatively scheduled for August 13th. As a reminder, for anyone who may be interested in applying for this committee, PEAK meets on the second Friday of every month at 12:00 PM here at Town Hall, and meetings typically run about one to two hours, and participants do not receive compensation or benefits from the city. This concludes my announcement, and please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? We'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, bring it back to the council. Thank you. Appreciate that announcement. 15.2, receive and file the May 2024 police reports stats chief friend.
I have nothing, Mayor. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great. Do we have any questions? None? I'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. 15.3, Development Services Department's development permitting statistics for the month of May 2024. Mr. Rebus.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nothing significant to report, other than I do want to point out that as far as our collection of impact fees have been fairly substantial, you know, basically because of the number of single-family home permits we've been issuing. So we're doing, I feel we're doing pretty well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Pardon?
We build things in Placerville. I do have a question. The two apartment things, it appears the one over by the, you know, I always forget, I always want to call it Dog Pound Road. It's over near Dog Pound Road. That one appears to have activity going on?
Yes.
The other one has, also has, appears to have activity on, but less. So what is the status of all this activity?
So basically, both the Mallard and the Middletown...
Mallard.
...forable housing projects, yes. That's, it's at Mallard and McIntosh?
Yeah.
It's there by the Wine Sap Development, and it's located within the Ridge at Orchard Hill Plan Development. So both of them do have grading permits that have been issued, so they're doing primarily grading work. We're hoping to get, hopefully within the next week or so, I'll turn that over to the city engineer.
The engineer is shaking her head.
...department that's reviewing the improvement plans for both projects. So we are hoping that we can issue, or at least we're being positive, that we can issue building permits hopefully by the end of the month.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Open this for public comment questions? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Number 16 is upcoming items. I will let you read those for yourself. And number 17, adjournment at 6:40. Thank you. I know.
Mayor, if I may, I have one, and I apologize. Lot adjourned yet. At your meeting of May 28th, it was item 11.1, and it was, I'll read what it was about, and then I'll, I want to give the council a status report. It was consideration to adopt a resolution declaring the abandonment, the abandoned pole sign located at 7530 Green Valley Road...
Yes.
...as an abandoned on-premises sign and a public nuisance, and declare it to commence abatement. So basically, what the council did was, they made a motion basically stating that if the sign face is removed and a for sale is placed on the sign, the sign may remain in place for up to 180 days. If the property is not sold or in escrow in 180 days, the entire pole sign will be removed, and then the motion passed. So basically, staff has been working with the property owner. The property owner has brought the sign into, let's just say, conformity in terms that it is no longer an illegal off-site advertising sign. That portion of the sign was removed, that copy, and also the Christlike Services, which hadn't been on the site for, I think, four years, that's also been removed. So it's a blank pole sign. Staff's read of this, and staff would just, like, just the city council concurrence that we want to work with the applicant, that he now has 180 days to use the sign as a, it's another sales point. It's real property, and so if the property is able to sell within 180 days, that's typically 180 days that a sign is considered abandonment. So he's been giving, he's been given a reprieve by the council for an extra 180 to 80 days if it's not sold. The only thing that council would, or staff would ask of council is, rather than requiring the applicant to put the for sale sign or a lease sign on the pole sign, as long as there's a for sale or for lease sign on the premises, staff, you know, doesn't see a point of actually putting it 60 feet in the air or whatever.
That sounds reasonable.
So that's the way staff wants to work with it.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable interpretation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we actually already adjourned, but we'll adjourn at 7:43 now. No, 6:43.